Good evening, welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. We had a closed session prior to this and we have no reportable action from item one. The first half of item two or number three, we did not get to the second half of item two and that will be moved forward to our next council meeting. And for our invocation, Pastor Fetterman, would you all please rise?
As a basis for my invocation, I turn to the words of one of the wisest men who ever lived. He understood leadership, governance, for he was not only wise and wealthy, he was a king. Proverbs 3 says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding; and all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make your paths straight." Dear God, as we gather in these moments, we have opportunity to declare our trust in you once again. As the words of this podium state and the words in our lobby proclaim, in you, in God, we trust. This is right since we have many skills and talents, but we are not you. We are frail, we are weak, and you are supreme and strong, eternal and wise, so God, we place our trust in you. As wonderful and great as our city is, as wonderful as it will be, we pray that you will give us your strength, your guidance, your wisdom, so we can all become the best that you've intended for us. I invite your presence this night into this meeting, into these moments. Grant our mayor, our council, city administrator, our leaders, our staff, the graciousness and understanding that it takes to be leaders of a great city. And bolster our citizens to grow in their care for each other and desire to make Lompoc the best it can be. We say thank you to all of those who serve us so well, those who protect us and keep us safe. Watch over them and guide them. And God, once again, we ask for your grace to be with us as we put our trust in you, in your mighty name. Amen.
Do you join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening we have several presentations and the first one will be from the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Santa Barbara Foundation to discuss the I Love Lompoc Window Display Competition.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about the I Love Lompoc campaign. About two months ago, I got a call from Kathy Seamus, who's in charge of the Lompoc Affiliate Office of Santa Barbara Foundation, and she goes, "I have an idea. I have an idea I want to talk about with you, something I'd like to do in Lompoc to help promote business and the beautification of our community." And so we met and we spoke about that very briefly and from that conversation, we put together a committee of various members, Councilmember Lingle is a member of that committee, and from that, we put together some ground rules for I Love Lompoc campaign. And I'm not going to go into the ground rules, you all have a copy of the packet there at some point to read at your leisure, as if you don't have enough to read already. But I'm going to let Kathy go into a little bit of details of the program and how it's going to work, and again, you have copies of the whole thing. So with that, Kathy Seamus.
Thanks, Ken, and Mr. Mayor and council members. I want to thank you for taking the time to let us come and make this presentation tonight and talk about this, what we consider to be a fun, community-wide project. So, the Lompoc affiliate is charged each year with doing some kind of large community event, and this year they decided that they would partner with the Chamber on a window display competition. So, this wonderful opportunity really celebrates the spirit of Lompoc. And we're hoping that it will not only capture local attention, but visitors alike. And by having this competition where we're going to have these window displays, we're encouraging the members of the business community, and this is whether they're Chamber members or not, we're encouraging them to decorate their storefronts and to reflect some kind of spirit along the theme of I Like Lompoc. So, we're kind of anxious to see what comes out of all of this. But each window will be judged on its use of theme, its overall appearance, use of color, and some other things. And we are going to have all the merchants vying for a, what we call a People's Choice Award, so that will be voted on by the community at large. There will also be a judged contest where we'll have a local panel of community members going out and judging the windows as well. So we're going to have two little competitions going. All the winners will receive bragging rights, and they will also receive stickers to place in their windows showing that they were winners of the contest. In addition, the judged contest winners will have the opportunity to actually designate a charitable contribution to a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit of their choice. And this is being provided by the Lompoc affiliate. So, at the end of all of this, the culmination, there will be a festive awards presentation for the participating businesses, and that is being planned in October. So, for just a quick, a few facts for some of you who aren't familiar with the project, the actual registration for participation, the deadline was yesterday. But we're encouraging you to now watch for all the ballots and the maps that will be placed around the city, starting on September the 18th. And they will be placed here at City Hall, at the two libraries, Anderson Recreation Center, the Dick Dewey Senior Center, and the Chamber office. And we will also have ballot boxes located in all of those places as well. And I'd like to take a moment to thank City Administrator Laurel Barcelona and also Assistant City Administrator Teresa Gallivan for supporting us on this and allowing us to use the City locations as the drop-off and pickup points. It's very helpful for the competition. So, the last thing I will tell you is that the contest, the actual judging of the contest, the windows will all be ready for viewing and judging by the community on September the 21st and will go through September the 28th. So I'm encouraging everyone to grab a ballot, grab a map, come out and see the windows. I know they will be must-sees, I just know they're going to be wonderful. So come out and see that spirit of Lompoc, vote, and we'll find out who the People's Choice winners are and we'll go from there. So, thank you very much for supporting this competition and for allowing us to make the presentation.
Thank you for your support, we appreciate it a lot. And who's going to take a set of pictures for posterity? Ken, is that on you?
We'll take pictures, definitely. I'm sure all the contestants will take lots of pictures.
And then some of the local newspapers are going to as well, so.
Good, good, good. Any questions? Thank you very much. And next, the City of Lompoc Aviation and Transportation Manager, Richard Fernbaugh, will present an update on the City of Lompoc Colt Services. This is a council request item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the 2010 TDA audit done by Santa Barbara County Association of Governments found Colt was not in compliance as it was not securing a 20 percent fare box return from its service. We negotiated with SB CAG and got that reduced to 15 percent fare box for a period of three years. Some of the things we took to try and get there, we discussed at a council meeting on June 21, 2011, those things... Some of the things council authorized us to do as part of the short-range transit plan recommendations were reduce service hours by one hour per day in the evening when we carried hardly any people, eliminate Route 2A, which was our lowest performing route, reroute Route 5 so it didn't go over an area twice already served by another route, and also discontinue an interline between Routes 1, 2, and 3, which meant that those buses did not have to wait for each other to return to a certain spot and therefore sped up the service. At the council meeting of October 2nd, 2012, council reviewed the short-range financial plan and authorized us to make some more service changes. One was to eliminate Route 5. We did that. We extended Route 1, however, to pick up most of that route, also serving the wine ghetto and the hospital. Also authorized us to use Measure A funds to supplement the fare box to assist Colt in maintaining the 15 percent fare box recovery ratio we agreed to do with SB CAG. As part of this meeting, council directed us to also expand our marketing activities. We added additional newspaper ads, we distributed Colt Golf Shirts to additional businesses and motels, we installed large route maps at major shelter locations, we had inserts in the city's monthly utility buildings, we did a pre-ride during the power festival, and we also distributed information to Lompoc Valley Center and Hammontock College. In April, staff held two public meetings to secure community input on the service changes made in January. We also provided formal printed surveys to route riders and received those back. In addition, we did a secret rider program, which put someone on to get informal comments from the riders of Colt, from those people who may not be willing or comfortable doing a written, formal survey. Some of the survey results that we found were 96 percent of the route riders did not have a car available for their trip, which means we are serving those that are heavily transit-dependent. 25 percent would not have made the trip without Colt, most patients ride on a daily basis. The improvements that were requested were more frequent service, which right now we're not doing because that would decrease our fare box. And we have had Sunday service requests for quite a number of years, but providing Sunday service in most cases in most other cities provides about one quarter of the fare box return of a weekday service. We also found out that 48 percent of fixed route riders have been riding for a year or less, so most of our riders, or vast majority of them, have not been writing much before we instituted the new route changes. And then 72 percent of our ADA service riders have been riding for two or more years, and in large percentage of those have been riding for 10 or more. Our on-time performance, if you look, this line here represents the difference between our previous service provider contractor, American Star Transportation. These are their performance figures. We did not keep track of the figures for ADA service in 2010-11. Since then, we have gone up on fixed route from 59 to 82 in 1112 to 97 percent on-time performance in 1213 after we made the route changes. ADA service has also improved from what it was, we don't know, up to 72 percent, and now we're at 86 percent on-time service. Both of those are, the 97 percent is above the average. Most places strive for a 90 percent service on time. Our ridership growth from January through June has gone up 2.7 percent over the same six-month period in 2012. ADA service, 2.9 percent over the same period. Those aren't huge jumps, certainly not the kind of jumps we would like to see, but when we get to July, then we hit an 8.85 percent jump over July 2012. We believe that this is showing that as the economy improves, our ridership will improve back again. Fare box recovery ratio, without our Measure A contribution, in 2010-11 was 9.8, 1112, 14.3. Our projected by the short-range financial plan was 13.9, we're actually at 11.5. This figure, however, does not, it's for the whole year and doesn't represent just the January through June ratio. In July through December, we had a major decrease in ridership. Nobody can tell us why, nobody has any ideas, but July and August of last year, we were almost 50 percent of what our normal rider fit was. So that knocks that down quite a bit. We would expect this to come up and be at what our projections were in the short-range financial plan, the current year that we're in. Any questions you may have?
Richard, would you say that the biggest change that helped us with our on-time was that route change where the buses weren't having to wait for the overlap?
I think that's one of them, because if one gets behind, then that makes the others behind and it just rolls on all the way through the day.
Stumble once and you're dead for the day?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fernbaugh, just for the public's information, because some people may not understand what fare box ratio is, would you define that, Republic?
Yes, the fare box ratio is a ratio between what we spend on operations versus what we take in through actual riders getting on the bus and paying a fare. We're supposed to have a 20 percent recovery ratio, maybe a better way to put it. That would mean that we recover 20 percent of our operating expenses. Right now, we have that agreement with SB CAG to do 15 percent. And we will be pursuing that, because even as we go further into it, we have an agreement with the county that they're going to pay us for the service we provide for them in local funds, Measure A funds, which will increase our fare box tremendously. But in the long term, as you look out five, 10 years, that may, as our costs go up, that may decrease.
That sort of answers my next question then, because my next question is going to be, we're into, we're in the first year of a three-year agreement with SB CAG at 15 percent?
No, we're actually in our third year.
So what happens then if we don't get to the 15 percent?
Well, we're going to go back and renegotiate with SB CAG again and strive for a permanent reduction to 15 percent, because that's where we think, what we think is more realistic than 20.
But we're currently only at 11.5.
Well, with the county's agreement to pay us in Measure A funds, those funds count as fare box money, therefore that'll bring our fare box up above 15 percent.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, I just want to congratulate you on your on-time service. I realize that some of it had to do with the changing of routes, but it's pretty impressive, 97 percent, so.
Yeah, and our new service provider, Store Transportation, has a lot to do with that.
Good, okay, well, thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. That was going to be my question as well, Councilmember Lingle. I'm curious, is how likely SB CAG is to allow that lowering to 15 percent? Are there any other municipalities or agencies that have lower than 20 percent currently?
Not in Santa Barbara County. However, Santa Maria had a decrease of 17 percent ridership last year, and Santa Barbara had a 13 percent decrease, I believe. They won't be asking for that. Santa Barbara has like a 37 percent fare box recovery. It's a heavily transit-required, you know, a city that uses that a lot, as well as UCSB students get that free as part of their fees that they pay at the university. So, it's something we've got to go back, we've got to show SB CAG our numbers, we have to make a case to do that.
And do you have a contingency plan in the case that they don't accept our argument?
Well, in the short future period, we have the money from Santa Barbara County that's going to up our fare box substantially, and that will hold us for a couple of years. And in that period, we hope ridership continues to come up and we continue to do the things we need to do.
Thank you.
There is an exemption under, for rural transportation systems, which we fall under to move to 15 percent.
To follow up on your question, Councilmember Costa, is, we get TDA funds, and what we would do is we would swap out Measure A funds, which are local funds, and use the TDA funds for road maintenance.
There's a switch. Councilmember Starbuck?
Mr. Fernbaugh, you say that the fare box ratios are based upon the operational cost. What can we reduce and keep our ridership as it is to make the ratio correct?
That would be real tough at this point. We've reduced most of our operating expenses that we possibly can at this point by decreasing service. We've also taken over some responsibility for, or the operating responsibility for Clean Air Express, and we've shifted some of our costs to that. Some of my time, staff time, operating costs go to Clean Air Express and picked up by that rather than being picked up by Colt. So, you know, we'll keep looking, but the real answer is...
We're basically bare bones right now, minus a minivan instead of a bus.
Yeah, we're at a point where we couldn't cut service anymore and be really viable.
Other questions? Thank you. And now, from City of Lompoc Police Chief Larry Ralston, a presentation, a summary of the report of the 2013 Lompoc Criterion Bike Race.
Maestro? Members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, I handed out to each of you tonight a copy of a little brochure that we have. This is our newest, it is a condensed-down version of our annual report. Wanted to give you a copy of it today, and there are more being printed, so we'll be able to make more available to you here in the next week or so. But this is what it looks like. It's very brief, just gives a snapshot of what's going on in the police department. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the Criterion that the Police Foundation has sponsored on June 30th. It was a two-day event, June 29th in Buellton, June 30th was in Lompoc, and it was sponsored and put on by the 805...
Firestone Walker.
Firestone Walker Brewery. I'm having a moment there. Anyway, these are some of the sponsors that stepped up in our community in Lompoc and gave us donations to be able to put this together, including the City of Lompoc. We had the Chumash Indians put up a substantial donation for us, as well as Imre's. The Denmat put up a substantial donation. The Firestone Walker Brewery put up a very substantial donation for this. And with that, we were able to put on this bicycle criterion, which has never been done before in the City of Lompoc or in the Central Coast. And what we have is a compilation of some of the pictures from that, and I know that several of you in the council were there that day and were able to observe what was going on. But it was a day of fun for family members. There were several of the competitors that brought their entire families with them, and several of them, different generations, that were racing in the event. It was very safe, we had a very well-laid-out track, thanks to Mike Hecker, who's our promoter with Stump Grinders Promotions. And Mike plotted that out, along with the assistance of Mike Luther, Captain Ed Lardner from the police department, Fire Chief Lotapow, and several other committee members that were meeting on a regular basis to help us put the safest course together for the group, for the riders. It was a very technical course, there were some turns in it that some of the riders said were competitive and that they were more difficult than they anticipated, and yet, when we said to them, "Should we change it for the future?", they said, "Absolutely not", we loved it. It was liked, well-liked by all of the riders. Again, at the end of each of the races, I'd made a point to speak to the competitors and ask them what they thought of the race. There were several positive comments that, one of them, gentleman said that he hoped that next year we could bring the senior competition to the Lompoc city, and it would be a statewide or regional competition. And the kids had a blast. We had a kids' race out there, there were several of them, all different shapes and sizes that were racing. They brought their bikes out there, and we had a good time and a lot of good laughs watching them. The announcers, I wanted to, I knew that the two announcers were talented and that they had some pretty impressive credentials, but just wanted to touch on one of them. The name is Steve Hegg, and it's the gentleman there on the right in the upper-left corner picture. And Steve Hegg was a 1984 Olympic gold medalist in Los Angeles, and he made the time to come out and to be one of our announcers. The other gentleman, if you're familiar with the X Games, they call it the Do, for the Mountain Dew Tour announcer, Gordy Johnson. And if you were there, they did a fantastic job of entertaining the crowd and energizing the crowd throughout the day, so they made it an enjoyable afternoon. The people, you know, we all had a great time. I know, I had to do it. Ashley Costa, our council member, she was able to start one of the races, and we got a great picture over there. So, it was a lot of fun by all of us. And next year, the question is, are we going to do it again next year? And our hope is, yes, we want to do it. We are currently trying to set on a date for the competition next year. Unfortunately, we have to work with a large, much larger cycling world out there around the country and figure out what the best date for our event in our city where we could draw the most competitors. And so, later in October, we'll have a date set, we hope, and then we'll be able to start advertising for the 2014 City of Lompoc Valley of Flowers Criterion. And with that, what I'd like to ask a couple of people to come up here, Carolyn White and Mike Hecker. And we have a presentation to the council. Mr. Mayor, if you could come down here? We have this winner's jersey awarded to the City of Lompoc, and this is the jersey that was presented to all of the winners on the platform the day of the race, and that is framed and made ready for display here in the City Hall.
All right, fantastic, thank you very much. We just want to thank you guys for interminable hours of work in preparing for this. I know you guys were out there all night and half the day, and it turned out great. And that announcer was amazing. I would say, I probably talked to 20 different competitors. Everyone was very enthusiastic about the course. Something about turning both right and left was pretty exciting, I don't know, you know, race bicycles. And they also wanted to know if we could take the weather to Buellton next year for the event, so you're going to work on that, right?
I will be working on that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to the community. And next year for the race, we hope that we can get more people to come out, spectators to watch it. It's a great event, it's very fast, energetic, and great for the family to watch and participate in. Thank you.
There was a local young man there who was in one of the faster races, and I know him, and he's pretty quick on a bike, and on the third lap, he was pulling out saying, "I can't keep up with these guys, they're amazing." And his tongue was pretty much dragging the ground by then. The city administrator's status report, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and committee audience, I'm pleased to report, Fire Chief Lotapow advised me that... Fire Chief Lotapow advised me that our firebrush engine crew returned home tonight at 5:00 PM after having been deployed to fight the fires in Chualomee County, the rim fire, as well as the earlier fire in San Diego. So, we welcome them home and commend them for a good job done, well done.
Okay. Any staff requests or announcements? Nope? Okay. Coming around to oral communication, this is your opportunity to talk to us about anything that's on your mind. If you are here about an item on the agenda and you can wait, that's better, but if not, come on down. Any takers? Going once, going twice. Closed. Oral communications. Now, we have the consent calendar. Item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 20th. Item two, approval of expenditures for payroll in the amount of $1,003,000. A voucher registered for $89,000. One for $301,000, one for $151,000, and one for $516,000. I will not participate in the vote on check number 314772 to Smitty's Towing for $261.25. A revision of the photovoltaic rebate amounts and additional funding for the rebates. And item four, reapport, reappointment of the City of Lompoc representative to the community library, to the county library advisory committee, new tongue. And is there any item a council member would like to pull? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and for those of you who are new, the items on the consent calendar are those really basic things that we're not going to spend a lot of time on, but we're all familiar with them. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And now, we move on to appointments. And we have two appointments, one for Robert Kennedy for the Senior Commission and a second for Carolyn Cameron. Yeah, I'm going to hurt that. B-A-M-O-N-T-E. Vermonti? Score. I didn't read that in advance. Sorry, Cameron. Is there any discussion on these? And if not, who would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, the question?
Yep.
Are we looking at the first appointee, Mr. Kennedy, for the?
Senior Commission.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Okay, never mind.
And the second one for the Youth Commission?
I move that we accept the slate.
I'll second.
Oops. And now that we've done that, we'll have Brad.
I'd just like to make a point of clarification. The Oversight Committee for the Pool and Park Assessment District had a change in membership.
Oh, I didn't read very well.
Criteria, which includes appointments from the Senior Commission and Youth Commission. So, these are standing members of these two commissions that are being appointed to the Oversight Board so that it can have a quorum to meet next month, so.
Okay, so rewind. So, we will have appointees to the Oversight Committee of the Park Maintenance and Pool Assessment District from the standing members of the Senior Commission and the Youth Commission. Do you still want to make that motion?
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Sorry about that, everyone. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Thank you. Yeah? Okay. Five-minute break. Okay, well, now we'll move to item six, an appeal submitted by Sandra Knight, representing Valley Haven Incorporated of the Planning Commission Action of July 17th, and I want to say in advance that I had met with the folks from Valley Haven, give or take a day or two before or after they filed their appeal, and I really don't know which it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. This, as the mayor indicated, is an appeal of the Planning Commission action, and the recommendation is for the council to hold the public hearing, consider the material presented in the staff report, and direct staff to prepare a resolution with appropriate findings of fact to either deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission decision regarding the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit, or to uphold the appeal and delete the Planning Commission required conditions of approval for improvements on the site, or to provide alternative direction. It should be noted that a timely appeal was requested by the applicant, Sandra Knight, representing Valley Haven, on July 26th, and that appeal was included in the council staff report. Ms. Knight has requested the city council eliminate the requirement for the onsite employee parking and eliminate the requirement for a public sidewalk. The appeal is a request for an amendment to conditions of approval imposed on conditional use permit, CUP 12-12, for the operation of the Valley Haven Senior Care Facility at 502 North Third Street. On February the 13th of this year, the Planning Commission considered a request to operate a senior care facility at a duly noticed public hearing. The proposed use was analyzed and conditions of approval were recommended by the Technical Development Review Board. The applicant had met with the Development Review Board and was aware of the proposed conditions prior to the meeting. The commission considered the information and with a unanimous vote, adopted the conditions of approval. All that material from that February 13th meeting and the adopted resolution with the conditions and the minutes were included for the plan, or, I'm sorry, for the council review. On July 17th, the Planning Commission held another meeting to consider a request from Ms. Knight for modifications to the conditions of approval, and the request specifically asked for elimination of requirements for installation of the sidewalk on the property, onsite parking, and replacement of trees. After reviewing the staff report and discussing the request with the applicant, the commission did, by unanimous vote, adopt a resolution modifying the conditions of approval. The applicant was given additional time to install the sidewalk, public improvements that were required, and was given additional time to install the trees on the site, and there was the requirement for the onsite parking, which was retained. The staff report information, the minutes, and the resolution were all included for the council to review. When considering the approval of a project, the Planning Commission considers the ability to adopt a resolution, and they have to make findings of fact. Those findings of fact are the basis of their decision. The council will also be adopting a resolution based on this evening's hearing and will be providing direction to staff of how that should be worded. One of the basic findings for the Valley Haven project was that the proposed senior adult daycare facility as condition meets the requirements of the Lompoc City Code and is consistent with the applicable policies and development standards. The development standards are those adopted by the council and implemented by the staff and the Planning Commission. The applicant is proposing a change to the use on the property at this time, and that is the opportunity for the city to bring the property up to current standards and to impose conditions of approval to take advantage of that opportunity. The proposed use is not one specifically granted by right in the residential area, but with the conditional use permit, conditions are placed on the property so that it is harmonious and it is not something that is dysfunctional within the actual community or causes any change to the residential character. In the staff report for the council, we did list a number of city requirements and development standards, both in the general plan, the municipal code, that support requiring these specific improvements. And as part of our staff report, I'd like to introduce Mike Luther, our city engineer, Assistant Public Works Director, and he would like to make some comments as well.
Thank you. Davey? I just have some general comments about why we require sidewalks and a bond. Basically, the city can't afford to maintain roads as it is, so as part of the general plan, it's a requirement of development to install sidewalks and pedestrian walkways. The reason we require a bond, if a time extension were granted, were to ensure that the requirement was implemented. If we didn't have a bond and we approved occupancy, there is really no recourse for the city to get the improvements installed after the fact. And I'd also just like to mention that this would set a bad precedent for other projects that have been contacted by other engineers that are watching this and saying that if this is approved, when I say approved, the, eliminating the requirement to install public improvements, that their clients are going to be asking for the same thing.
Okay. Is that it for you, Lucille? Okay, and I'd last ask the applicant to come and make your presentation.
I do have some site plans for each of you, if you'd like.
You have to say your name.
I'm Sandra Knight. I'm the executive director of Valley Haven. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. There's a site plan that's going along, which we'll show. There's one for each of you up there that, so that you can see what we're talking about. I thought that would be a little easier. By this time, you're all familiar with our organization and the services that we provide to the Lompoc community. Valley Haven has been at our current location for 13 years. We were first looking to move so that we could expand our program hours and days of operation. We also believe that we had worn out our welcome at our current location, having been there so long. It has taken us three years to find a new home with two very disappointing false starts. To give you a little information about our organization, our breakdown in income is as follows. Thirty-nine percent of our income comes from client fees, five percent from government sources, forty-two percent from private grants, and fourteen percent from fundraising. Last year, last fiscal year, we gave out over $23,000 in scholarships in the Lompoc community alone. To address the parking issue, we have three employees who work at any given time at our Lompoc location. I understand that street, that onsite parking or street parking is generally not allowed, but given the size of the lot and the fact that there is more than ample room to accommodate our three employees, there's over 250 feet of curb parking because this is a large corner lot, and our three employee cars would only take up about 54 feet of that space. So, there is more than ample space for on-street parking. Also, our program is going to end at 5:00 in the evening, so our employee cars are going to be gone at 5:00 or probably 5:15 before most people even get home from work. And I think in most residential areas, if there is going to be a parking problem, it's going to be in the evenings when people get home from work. With regard to the sidewalk, our basic problem is that the sidewalk is very expensive. To install the sidewalk would cost us about $15,000. No sidewalk has been there for the entire history of the home. I understand that this is a change of use, but it's very difficult for a small nonprofit organization that serves some of the neediest people in the community to bear the burden of installing this public improvement. We cannot easily raise our rates to recoup the cost of the sidewalk, nor are we able to obtain a grant to cover the cost of the sidewalk. No foundation will give us money to install the sidewalk because we won't own the sidewalk. It's a public improvement. Valley Haven provides a valuable and much-needed service to the Lompoc community. I realize that your current, what your current code calls for, but I implore you to help us make our new home a reality by relaxing some of your regulations in the case of a nonprofit organization. The photos that are up right now are just, this is if you can kind of go through them. This is just to show where the sidewalk's going to go. This is along Third Street here, right before the apron. And then, this is along Maple. So, it's quite a long stretch of sidewalk there. This is on the other side of Third Street, on the other side of the sidewalk, so it continues down past the garage. And then, this is just a picture of the overall, you know, from Maple, of the house. I know that we do have some other speakers that wanted to speak this evening, but I'm available to answer any questions either now or later.
Any questions at this time? Councilmember Lingle?
Tall tree that's saying, is that the one you're, if you'd be?
Yes, we have been given permission to remove that cedar tree. It loses limbs. There's a limb in the yard right now. It's quite an old tree. So, our concern is that it does tend to self-prune, especially in bad weather. And so, the Planning Commission did graciously give us six months to install new trees once that tree has been removed.
And that's not an issue, correct? That's not something in the appeal?
No, no.
I got a question for staff. On that tree, since I live in that area, it is one of the ugliest trees in the area. Now, why did they have to get a permit to take that tree out, even if they didn't put the parking area there? If it was my tree and I lived there, I'd have it torn out three years ago.
It was a request, it was part of the project that they requested removal of the tree, and the urban forester looked at it and was in agreement with the need to have it replaced.
Okay.
I think the issue arose because it had been put on our plan and it said, "Existing tree to remain." And so, once we changed what was on the site plan, then we needed to get the permission for that.
Councilmember Starbuck?
That tree's not on an easement. That's on all your property, right?
Correct.
So, our urban forestry is mitigating a tree on your property? Is that what we're doing by the placing two 15-gallon containers of new trees there? Is that what we're doing, is telling them they have to replace them?
The recommendation was for them to do so, and they seemed to accept the condition. It was not a negative issue for them.
Okay. Anything else that you want to share with us before I open this up to public comment?
No. I can always come back.
Don't go away. We may get you back. Okay, now, I'd like to open this for public comment. Those of you who'd like to talk to us about this, come on down.
Mayor Lynn, members of council, I am Town Parks, Member of the Valley Haven Board of Directors and a resident of the City of Lompoc. Technically, by standard definition, Valley Haven, a nonprofit senior day program, is a business, but in reality, we are much more like a family. Our structured, comprehensive program is for seniors, many of whom have some degree of cognitive impairment. Some are simply socially isolated, but all are heavily dependent upon their caregivers. Valley Haven gives these seniors, our customers, a reason to get up in the morning and something to look forward to in participating with their peers in the varied activities we provide. These seniors, our customers, don't drive to Valley Haven, park their cars, trucks, or SUVs, and come inside for their daily get-together with their extended family. They are brought to Valley Haven by our van or by their caregiver, who is then freed up for the day to go to work, attend to their daily chores, or simply have a chance to relax. Full-time caregiving is very demanding. Our customers don't park their cars at Valley Haven. Our few staff members, three in number, have virtually a whole city block on both sides of Maple Street to park their personal vehicles during our hours of operation. Off-street parking space for our vans already exists on our property. We have no need for additional, very expensive parking. crushing demands for paving as ruled by the Planning Commission, regardless of the number of vehicles that might be involved on a 24/7 basis as a family. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I ask you, Mr. Mayor, and you members of the council, to reconsider the nature of our business and set aside the parking and sidewalk requirements in question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice Milligan, I live in Lompoc. I'm a mayor, members of council, staff. I've never cared for an Alzheimer's patient, but I can certainly imagine how stressful that situation would be, not only for the patient, but for the caregiver. And we are fortunate in Lompoc because we have a wonderful care facility, Valley Haven, which allows the caregiver an opportunity to recharge their energy and also provide socialization for the patient or client. Valley Haven has seen fit to purchase a larger facility to accommodate more clients and offer more services. In doing so, they have exhausted their available funding. And I was looking at the staff report, and I noticed that they refer to Valley Haven as a business, but actually, it's a nonprofit, and I don't know if that makes any difference in terms of the rules that are being applied. The Planning Commission has attached some very untenable requirements, such as sidewalks and onsite parking, which Valley Haven does not, at the moment, have the funding. And I've met with them several times in terms of ideas for obtaining funding, and they're a small group, and it basically would be very difficult for them to raise about $25,000 to $28,000 for this concrete. I am now aware that Lompoc is noted to help developers to fast-track a project or make exceptions for a project, and certainly, this structure has survived for 100 years without a sidewalk. I think it could continue for a period of time. I urgently request that the council provide some leeway for Valley Haven, either to not require the sidewalks or site parking, and I certainly would encourage you to do that, or at least give them a reasonable time to be able to raise funds to provide for those facilities. And I noted that one of the requirements was that they provide a bond, and I understand that they're not able to secure a bond. This would allow Valley Haven to now open its facilities in order to provide services for our local citizens, who need these services now, not later. It comes down to two things: Concrete versus people. And I vote for people, and I hope you will too. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. We don't applaud and we don't boo, but I appreciate your sentiment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Pull that microphone down just a little bit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Celeste Willette Comer, and I was thrilled that Valley Haven, a nonprofit organization, wanted my property for their senior daycare. Their services to our community is so important in so many ways, some of which they provide families with seniors being able to work outside the home, to provide for their families and maintain their homes. They would also be, they also would be able to maintain good health, happiness within the family units, for caregiving can be very stressful and demanding. Families supporting our stores and improving our growth, bringing new business to our community, and drawing home buyers, knowing we have this valuable nonprofit here available to them. It is a cause dear to my heart, for I was a caregiver, so I know how hard and how important it is to have Valley Haven here, and how important it is for caregivers to have that time and for family members. After reading the Sunday Lompoc Record, I wanted to speak out. I offered the city a few years ago, when I heard that they had grant money for sidewalks to put them in, but I was told the grant money was already allocated for other areas in town. This property is unique in many ways, one being, the aspects of the property being having grandfathered-in areas. I strongly feel that since Valley Haven is a nonprofit, that it should be granted the grandfathered-in status and not be forced to provide sidewalks that haven't been there since 1921, when the house was first built. I want, I went a step further before considering speaking tonight and looked up business in the Webster's Dictionary. It states, "The activity of buying and selling, active selling transactions." I also looked up nonprofit. It stated, "Non-maintained or organized for profit." They're a nonprofit. They're a senior daycare, and they should have, they should not have to adhere to business codes. I urge you, our City Council, to reconsider your demand on this much-needed nonprofit to provide sidewalks that they will not use or own. I feel the city, if the city feels now, some 90 years later, that this property needs sidewalks, that they should provide them. If you can't get a grant unless you own what you will be applying for, then, what the grant will be used for, then I urge the city to get a grant needed and for the sidewalks, because the sidewalks will be city property, and let the city put in the sidewalks. Let's let Valley Haven, senior daycare, a nonprofit, get on to provide our city, our families, our community, and mostly, our seniors, the valuable service that they will provide without any further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Don't everybody get up at once. Come on, you guys.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Sally Bass. I'm a board member of Valley Haven, and I'm also a caregiver. I became interested in Valley Haven when my mother was diagnosed with dementia about five years ago. And at the time, when a person is diagnosed with dementia, one of the things that happens to them is that they become socially isolated. My mother was very active in her church. She was very active in the PEO's group, and also at the country club. And she dropped out of each and every one of those things, because she was aware of the fact that her memory was going. And with her memory going, she, you know, she'd look at people and she would realize that she had said something over again, or she couldn't remember what they told her. Well, when my mother was diagnosed with dementia, a couple of people mentioned Valley Haven, and we went to Valley Haven. And it is a place that my mother felt like she belonged. She went there for about four years. She was a widow, and she lived alone, so she didn't have anybody at home taking care of her. We eventually got some in-home care, but this was a place she could go. She got dressed to go there every day. It was like going to work. She decked herself out in jewelry and everything, and it really made a big difference for her. The bus would come. She would be ready for the bus. She wouldn't forget it was Valley Haven Day. This was something that was very important, and my mother felt like she belonged there. So I realize that we're being considered a business, but in a lot of ways, the nonprofit is like a third box. I think that we should, we should have a third box. You've got your residential, you've got your commercial, and a nonprofit organization is a little different. Anyway, that's, I just wanted to say what it was like to be a participant in that program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Steger, and my mother attends Valley Haven on a daily basis. And I would say that her going there has given back my dad his life, as well as my mom's life. I apologize, I'm not a very good speaker.
Take a breath. It's okay. Just think of us as your family.
Thank you. My mother has dementia, and she goes there every day. As I said, the bus comes and picks her up, and she seems to actually have improved, which is, doesn't happen with dementia, but she definitely has plateaued and not gone down any further in her, in her health. And I attribute that to her going to Valley Haven every day. The care she gets there from the people who work there is amazing, and it's a wonderful, cost-effective way to, for my dad to have some help for her and for him to be able to, like I said, get his life back. And he's 86, and he's the primary caregiver for her, so it's very difficult for him. And so he gets a little bit of focus in his life, as well as the rest of our family. So I hope that they can continue to operate with the same cost-effective situation that we've been afforded so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Loretta Skinner. I live at 401 North Daisy. I've been here for 40 years. I'm a retired ILBN. I used to work at the hospital and Sampson. So I'm telling you that, so you can see where I'm at now. I'm a wellness coordinator for Valley Haven. I do blood pressures for them twice a month at both the Lompoc and the Solvain facility. My husband is how I first came to Valley Haven. He's had three strokes, two brain hemorrhages, and the last stroke, he became aphasic and couldn't walk that good. And he's, I'm a 24-hour caregiver, so I can tell you the both sides of the coin. Valley Haven has been an answer to a caregiver's prayer, and I'm asking you to be lenient as far as just the status that you're putting us at, and not require such a heavy, something heavy like this that we couldn't raise money for. So I thank you for this time, Mr. Mayor and the council.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I'm here to add my voice to the ones that you've heard already and ask you to eliminate the staff parking for the Valley Haven facility. I've been over there and walked around the area, and there is more than enough parking. And with only three staff people, it just seems that to require more, it just doesn't make any sense. I'd also ask you to waive the bond. I think that as a nonprofit, anyone who's worked with nonprofits knows that it's very difficult to raise money, and, and the money you do raise, you put into the services for your clients. And so a bond is very punitive in terms of the requirement that would make. And I would also ask you to waive the sidewalk requirement. You know, this house has been there, well, I know since the '30s, because one of the things that I think is so cool about Valley Haven moving into this facility is that my husband was born at this facility, because back in those days, it was the birthing center for Lompoc. And so how wonderful that it started out as a birthing center, and now it's for people that are getting towards the end of their life. I mean, it's like we've come full circle. And it's a very, very important, important organization, and to ask to put in those sidewalks where there's never been any, and you look at the area, I mean, it's easy to walk around there. It's actually, I've, I lived a block from there for many years. I walked strollers through that area. I've been with people on walkers through that area and wheelchairs through that area. The ground is packed so solid that it's really quite easy to get around that area without sidewalks. And I too, like some of the former speakers, this year, my father came to live with me, and I was faced with having to be a caregiver and work full-time. And I freaked out. I didn't know what I was going to do. I got on the phone and started calling everyone, and people after people referred me to Valley Haven. I went up there and visited a couple times, and then I took my father up there to see how he would like it. And I have to tell you, when I walked into Valley Haven, it was like the face of Lompoc. I knew everybody there. These are all, you know, parents and grandparents of people that I knew, that I've grown up with in Lompoc, and the staff was very loving. And I have to tell you, my father today, just as an example, when the bus came to pick him up, he calls it his crew. His crew was there, and he's walking out to the bus, and he starts doing this little dance. Now, you have to picture this. My father is going to be 103 in a week, and yet, he gets so excited when he gets to go up and have the opportunity to hang out with people and laugh and eat with friends. So it gives him the ability to have a good quality of life, and it gives me the ability to go to work, not being stressed, knowing that he's being cared for. Valley Haven is, has done wonderful work in this community for people that need the care and for the caregivers, and more importantly than that, for the community. Because I can tell you that if they weren't there, we would be facing a lot of problems with people who wouldn't be able to work, or wouldn't be able, or know how to deal with some of the issues that they would have to deal with. So, today I was driving into town, and I went by on the edge of town, a new business that just opened, and I thought, oh, that's great. This is exciting, this new business. And I noticed they didn't have sidewalks or even a road, really. And so I don't know how that happened, and I'm, and I'm saying yay, because we need it, but I thought, well, yeah, we can. We can waive things, or we can give people longer periods of time to meet the requirements. And I would just strongly encourage you to do that in this case, either waive it or give them a longer period of time, because we will all be so proud when Valley Haven moves into this facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name's Steve Pepe. I'm speaking here on behalf of Valley Haven. It must be a rare alignment of the stars tonight to have Joyce Howerton and Alice Milligan agree on one thing at the same time in a public forum is quite an unusual event. I'd like to, couldn't resist that, I'm sorry. I'd like to spend a minute and say, what is not an issue here? This is not a health and safety matter. There hasn't been a sidewalk for 90 years. If another family bought this place, there wouldn't be a sidewalk, nor can we make any argument that not having a sidewalk is sort of an eyesore, out of place, or inconsistent. I drive into Lompoc from the east, and when you come down Ocean Avenue across from Home Depot, there's a couple hundred feet of no sidewalks. You get past the hospital and the vet place, and again, both sides have no sidewalks for a couple hundred feet, and we've been living that way. So I don't think that's the issue. What is the issue? The issue is, you're being asked to make a policy decision. The Planning Commission only has two boxes. They have a residential box and a business box, and they're not in a position to make policy, but you folks are. You could argue this either way. If you've got to stick it in a box, what Planning Commission said was, well, it's not a residence, so therefore, it must be a business. But as has already been noted, a business is engaged in for-profit, its income exceeds its expenses, and it attracts customers. A residence is a place where 24/7 people eat, sleep, reside, and keep their possessions. Nobody's sleeping at Valley Haven. Nobody's residing there. No possessions are kept, and they have meals only five days a week and one meal. So the question is, why should you make the policy decision to approve Valley Haven's appeal? First off, the city should encourage adult daycare for its citizens. We're all going to get older. It's a growing need, and thank God and thank heaven that Valley Haven is here to do that. We ought to recognize that other municipalities, look at Boulton and Solvang, they provide money in their budget for nonprofits. They call it human resources, but they regularly have anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 that they divide up among people helping people, Red Cross, and others. We don't have that luxury. The sidewalks have no direct benefit to Valley Haven. Their clients, like some of us, have trouble walking, and they're sure not going to be walking into it. The foundation will not give grant money, as you've already heard, because they don't own the sidewalks. The argument that I think is most, should be most concerning to you, but is easily disposed of, is the one that was alluded to and mentioned more strongly in your written documents, that this would establish a precedent and that this, therefore, it shouldn't be avoided. Precedents are established in the law for stability and predictability, and what it basically means, if you have the same facts and the same law, you get the same result. Shouldn't get a different result because you have a different judge. The only precedent you're going to establish here- that they divide up among people helping people, Red Cross and others. We don't have that luxury. The sidewalks have no direct benefit to Valley Haven. Their clients, like some of us, have trouble walking and they're sure not gonna be walking into it. The foundation will not give grant money, as you've already heard, because they don't own the sidewalks. The argument that I think is most, should be most concerning to you, but is easily disposed of, is the one that was alluded to and mentioned more strongly in your written documents, that this would establish a precedent and that this, therefore, it shouldn't be avoided. Precedents are established in law for stability and predictability. And what it basically means, if you have the same facts and the same law, you get the same result. Shouldn't get a different result because you have a different judge. The only precedent you're gonna establish here is that you have a nonprofit that isn't required to put in a sidewalk or put in a parking pad. That's the only precedent that's gonna be established. It's not gonna be a precedent for another business that is a commercial enterprise. It's not gonna be a precedent for another nonprofit that wants to do something other than put inside, not put in sidewalks or not put in a, a parking pad. So I would urge you to think out of the box. There's only two boxes. I urge you to make the policy decision. And the policy decision should be to grant the appeal and not require the sidewalks or the parking pad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public hearing and come back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I have a couple of questions. The first question I have is for staff. Just to be clear and for the public purpose, what I believe to be the case is that when we're, when the city is building sidewalks, that is because it is a residential property and not a conditional use permitted property or commercial or any other use property? Or do we actually build sidewalks on multiple properties?
The city doesn't build sidewalks. We maintain sidewalks. The only new sidewalks that are getting installed would be through a grant, like Safe Routes to Schools.
And, right, so a lot of folks, and I think that that was the question that I've received, is a lot of folks are seeing that sidewalks are currently being built at this time. And there's specifics, specifications, rather, on that grant fund. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think the project that's out right now is a Safe Routes to School grant project. So it has to be on a, meet certain criteria for the grant, direct route to schools, those type of items.
And the other question that I have, it's interesting. Mr. Pepe brought up the Human Services Commission is, I believe what you were referencing. The city of Lompoc does have a Human Services Commission. And I don't know if there's anybody present as far as staff is concerned who can answer my question. But if we were to implement these requirements for Valley Haven, would they then be able to apply for a Human Services grant to pay for these expenses?
I'm sorry, I really would have to research that.
Because I understand the struggle that the nonprofit is having, of course, in coming up with the funds that are necessary to pay for these things. I want to first say, I did meet the two board members of Valley Haven prior to this meeting to discuss details of the appeal, just generally, general information. And I wanted to thank all the speakers who came today. There's no doubt, I mean, there's so much genuine appreciation for what is done at Valley Haven and, and really a lot of support in the community. Sometimes I get frustrated because the Community Action Commission runs a food service program and they're having really have time with their senior nutrition program. And here we are, we have another nonprofit who's having a struggle with their senior program. And so sometimes I feel like we have to see what services are needed within our community and address those needs in the ways that we can. So I'm, I'm having a little bit of a struggle here. Particularly, I have a question for Ms. Knight, actually. If you could, please come back just for a moment. Just to talk about a couple of specifics, how many folks attend the adult daycare as it is today?
We, well, at this new facility, we'll be licensed for fifteen people. That's the maximum that we can have at any given time. Usually, we have probably about twelve people that are attending on a daily basis now. We were just calculating it the other day. And since we have opened in Lompoc, we have served three hundred and seven families or individuals. And for every senior that we serve, there's usually about two and a half caregivers that benefit from the senior attending our program.
And so because it's captive fifteen, do you ever see growth potential for Valley Haven?
Yeah, well, we would have to expand our facility, which this site does give us the room to do that.
So that's, that's the concern that I have, is that I think that that's great. I mean, if there's a need and you're willing to meet the need, I think that's fantastic. But if we approve parking, for example, on-street parking for this instance, and then you wanna grow, we'd then have to reassess. And it may be a larger cost in the long run, if that makes sense. So is there any, has there any thought been given to that? You know, especially the parking issue, if you do grow, where that would growth would take place onsite?
Onsite, I mean, it would either have to occur behind the current residence, which there is room to do that, or off to the side closer to the alley where the, where the parking is currently slated to be. So we would, you know, if we were to expand, we would obviously have to provide some onsite parking for additional employees at that time, which we would know that we would have to do. If we expanded our capacity, if we, you know, expanded our facility and increased our capacity, we would probably have to add probably two new staff members. So we would know that when we come to that bridge, I mean, that is something that we're gonna have to do. You know, when we choose to expand, that we would have to address that parking issue.
Thank you. Yeah, I look at, you know, the square footage being two hundred and fifty feet of curb parking and three cars. You know, you're looking at one-seventh or so of the, of that distance being taken up by three cars. And even with four, you know, you're, you're still much less than half of that space being taken up. That could otherwise be taken up by a residential family that would have, could have lived there in any case. So I am having the issue, thank you, Ms. Knight, I think that's what I have for you right now. What I wanted to bring up to council is, is I wanna make this feasible for Valley Haven. But I also want us to recognize that we have certain policies that were set and, and we have those for a reason. So I'm, I'm having a little bit of a struggle here. I wanna hear what the rest of council has to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, first of all, I wanna say that there is absolutely, in my opinion, there's absolutely no doubt to people up here and to the community that Valley Haven is a valuable asset to our community. I appreciate all the comments about how you've been helping people for many years. And I think that is really understood and we appreciate your being here. Just for a little bit of clarification from Ms. Knight, unless something has changed, I was on the vestry at St. Mary's for six of the past ten years, senior warden. Unless something has changed, you certainly haven't worn out your welcome there. They, they really enjoy having Valley Haven there. I know there's, there's been a problem with, you want to expand the hours, they can't accommodate it. And you want to go to Saturdays, I believe, as well, and they could not accommodate that. But St. Mary's love, as far as I know, I'm still there, they, they love having Valley Haven there. But that's just a side note. I don't think that affects us right here. Several of the questions I had sort of have been answered. You know, Mr. Pepe brought up the setting the precedent. And I understand what he said, or I heard what he said. I may not have understood what he said. Because I, I do, down deep, I still feel that we may be setting a precedent. And I may need some help with that a little bit. I, because I'm not concerned that we're not setting a precedent. The issue with the nonprofit versus business, I think, you know, I asked the attorney this one. I mean, can we differentiate in this case? Our code gives just the two boxes, residential and business. I mean, is, do we have on this, tonight, do we have the ability to make a third box?
Through the mayor. I, I don't think the issue is whether it's a business that makes money or a business that's a nonprofit, or, use a different word, whether it's a profit or nonprofit organization. The issue is, it's a change of use from the residential that's there and it's becoming a different use, which requires the conditional use permit, which requires the other portions of the code to be applicable. So to answer your question, the box is not the important part. It's the fact that it's changing from one use to another use.
Okay, thank you. Which then I'm going, I'm gonna go back to the nonprofit status. And there's a lot of compelling discussion tonight saying that this is nonprofit, it's not a business. And I understand that Valley Haven, with the clients, residents you have, they, you probably do not need the sidewalks. With the number of employees you have, three employees, you probably do not need the parking. There's plenty of on-street parking. But Councilmember Costa brought up a good point. That's today. What about two years from now, three years from now? What if you have the ability to expand? What if you have the need to go seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day? There's care that's obviously needed more than just during the day. So I mean, those are, those are things I have to consider right now. Are we, if we allow this to be waived, are we saying that we don't need the parking, the sidewalks, five, six, seven years from now? And then the nonprofit, your nonprofit doesn't need the sidewalks. But what if that nonprofit moving into that place was a food pantry? And members of the community were walking with their children in strollers to this food pantry? They'd be forced to walk on the street. And I understand that the ground is packed down really nice, but I'm, the ex-owner of the property is here and I'd wanna, you know, the property doesn't look real nice right now. And I'm hoping that when the new tenants move in there, they'll make it look a lot nicer and possibly put on some, put in some nice grass there. What if it is a, a food pantry or a childcare center where young families with children would need to be walking on the sidewalk as opposed to the street? Things I'm considering. The reasonable amount of time and the bond is what I'm really struggling with, with right now. I really believe that if we, tonight, decide, no, we, we still want you to have sidewalks, we still want you to have parking, I believe a reasonable amount of time is reasonable. The bond, it is expensive. And I don't know where I'm going with this. So I'm hearing from staff that if they don't have the bond and we issue the use permit for you, there's nothing we can do in the future, even though, even though tonight you promised that in ten years you'll have a sidewalk and parking. What I'm hearing from our staff is that in ten years from now, if you don't have the sidewalk and parking, there's really nothing we can do about that. So I'm struggling with that. I hate issues like this because it's, I really, right now, I'd just like to push the yes button that I, we're going to allow you to have it. There are so many other factors that I have to take into account right now. So anyway, I haven't hit my mind yet. I still have time to discuss, but I'm gonna hear from the rest of council members.
Councilmember Hombol.
Yeah, you'll get my two bits now, too. I, I was down to the Valley Haven when they had an open house, I guess, about two months ago. I had a tour through the facility and I've looked at it, and I drive by it most all the time because I live on Poppy Street. And a lot of the comments we had here tonight, and Bob was just making, is that what they do and, you know, when they're asking for parking, they don't need that extra parking. If you had a commercial operation, you may need it. The curb out front of the building on Maple, it's plenty of parking for what they have right now. Now, the sidewalk, when they want to put sidewalks, you're going all the way down Third Street and you're also talking about all, that whole section on Maple. Why, they don't need Third Street for any reason right now. And they've got plenty of parking down to bring their people in. I have no problem saying on the, the extra parking, we don't need it. And if we wanna split the votes up, we can do it by that. That is not needed. Now, how we handle the sidewalks, that's something else again. Well, what you could put a recommendation, if you allowed it to go through, then you'd put stipulation. If it ever changes from the operation it has now, the type it has, expanding or anything else, then all these other issues would have to be taken place. Right now, they don't need that extra parking. The sidewalk is a questionable one. The only reason I would think any sidewalk on, on Maple would be something to look at is that if it is raining, whoever gets out of their car and goes into the business, it'd be nicer than walking out in a rainy street. But that, you know, that's their decision to make that up. But that would be the only place I could see a sidewalk right now is on Maple. But if you put the program together and then say, this is the master plan, that if this facility ever changes in any operation that's what it is right now, then these would have to come into effect. And that's where I'm, I'm coming from is because they don't need it now. I've been there. I've been inside the building. You got people coming. I did go to one out there, the church, several times. My mother almost went out there, but she, she didn't need to go yet. And so I know what caregivers is. My dad was eighty-seven when he passed away and he had dementia. My mother was ninety-six, but she still took care of herself most of the time. But it was getting close. There we go. Those facilities are needed. We all need it. So I think that if the council wants to look at something, in my estimation, I cannot support the parking place. I could somewhat respect maybe on the sidewalk on, on Maple only. But there is so much parking all around that building. If you only got three employees, you just don't need that extra parking.
Let me get a couple of questions and then I'll come to you. So the, the, this, this question's for Lucille. The five parking spaces were driven by the size of the facility on the total square footage?
Yes, the, the use was not specifically listed in the parking regulations. However, what we do is look at the closest use. And the closest use was nursery, school type operation. So the requirement would have been for six parking places. The two vans that they have are two of the parking places. And then with the number of employees that they have, which are two to four employees, the size of the building is two thousand square feet. So there were an additional four required.
Okay, and back to you, Ms. Knight. Does the square footage of the building drive the number of attendees you can have and hence the number of staff members?
Yes, it's mostly, it's governed by what we can get Stan to approve, the fire marshal. And for the size of the building, it is fifteen people max.
Okay. I assume when you went out looking for a bond, you learned what those of us who are in the construction world know, that they're very hard to get and they're very expensive, and you probably couldn't even qualify?
We could not qualify. We would not, the bonding company was not willing to loan to anyone who is self-funding a project. And I, I wasn't really surprised.
Well, you know, in a prior world, you could have gotten that bond. But after two thousand and seven, no, not so much. You know, I'm very familiar with your site. I probably have walked by there a thousand times when my store was on H Street and my house was on Sixth Street. So...
And actually, with regard to Mr. Hombol's comments about the sidewalk on Maple, while our, our house does base Maple, we're going to be entering off of Third primarily. I mean, that's where the driveway apron comes in. And that's where things are going to be wheelchair accessible or public, to access the public right away. So that's where we'll mostly be entering off of, I believe.
And is your intention to park your vans in that driveway?
Yes, we have two, yes. So there are two, going to be two spaces for the van. And we can probably fit another car behind one of the vans, but we were told that you can't count that for parking. You can't park one behind another. And really with people too, when they come to drop off their senior, most likely they do that when one of our vans is out picking people up. So they're just gonna pull right into that spot because it's the most logical and it's gonna be the easiest for them. So they'll just pull right in that spot that's vacate, that the van has vacated.
And is the rental unit occupied currently?
It is occupied. Unfortunately for us, he has given his notice and will be moving in November. And it does have its own parking place.
But you're gonna continue to rent that out?
Yes, that is the plan. It will, we will be making some, you know, handling some maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. I'll obviously wanna try to do something to help them. I think the, the issue here is twofold. Number one, I agree with the sta, what the staff says, which is that we don't wanna do something that we're gonna be married to with a lot of other people. I think we have some leeway. Because there was actually nothing in our code that addressed this particular type of facility and how many parking spaces it would need, I think we could realistically reduce the parking spaces from five to three based on the fact that the fire marshal sets their occupancy, the occupancy dri- their occupancy, the occupancy drives their number of employees, so the city controls whether or not they're gonna have more employees. So, if they're gonna come back and want to increase their occupancy and hence their number of employees, they're gonna have to come back to us to get it done. With regard to the sidewalk, I really don't want to say, no, you don't have to do it, but I'm more than willing to grant an additional amount of time. Say, 18 months would give them enough time to work with the community and do the necessary fundraising and get some help and do those sort of things. I understand the problem of raising money, working with a lot of nonprofits, but I think we need to, to do the things that'll help them while continuing to do what is that we're responsible for on an equitable basis to everyone equally. So, those are my thoughts. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Your thoughts are similar to mine, in that I think we have enough support in the council in regards to parking. You know, like we talked about, if there was some growth, you'd have to come back and reapply. I don't even think you need to put anything in there, because that isn't automatic. You know, if they're coming to grow, there's gonna be an additional application and requirements at that time. So, I think that that, across the board, we have support on council for that. I'm in the same place as far as the sidewalk is concerned. I just checked online, and the title of the funding stream is capital development funding through the community development block grant process. So, there is a pot of money within the city for capital developments. Now, I can't say with 100% certainty if this would fall in line, if this project would fall in line, but I could imagine that it would, and it would actually be very much smiled upon, because it is improving the cities right away as well. So, I would recommend that if we do continue the requirement of the sidewalk, that you look into that as a potential funding stream, along with raising money from the community. And I think, you know, time is, however much time is appropriate, you know, whether that's 18 months or perhaps even 24 months. But my one concern is, when I go back to city staff, is that I know that the bond was suggested, and Mr. Luther, if you want to mention, or if you want to discuss this, because essentially, if we put this requirement on the property, you know, you have 24 months to do this, or to start the process, maybe not have the project completed, but actually just have it started, or even just have the funding in place, I think is sufficient in 24 months. But then nothing happens, right? So, then what is our leverage on that? What, what happens in that case? And that's why you wanted the bond. Is that correct? Could you just go over that briefly?
Well, I think at that point, the only leverage we have would be to revoke the conditional use permit through the planning commission. I don't, we don't have any leverage in the streets department or the engineering department to, to leverage the property owner.
So, why was there a suggestion of a bond as opposed to just revoking the conditional use permit?
Well, it's very hard to, you're having a hard time requiring to put sidewalk in. Just imagine if they have a business going on where you have all these seniors participating, and you're gonna have to kick them out. That would be very difficult.
I think what you're asking is, what, what does the bond do for the city? So, the, if the improvements aren't in place, the city could then use the bond to put the improvements in ourselves and pay our, and pay ourselves back, basically. So, the bond guarantees the city's costs. If the, the property owner doesn't follow through and do the improvements, the city would do the improvements and then be made whole, basically. That's, that's what the guarant, that's what the bond does.
Right. In understanding the nature of bonds, do you think it's a reasonable argument that this organization's having a very tough time getting approved?
I, I don't know that it's impossible, but I would imagine that it's more costly than maybe they anticipated initially. Yes.
Thank you. That answered my question. So, you know, I think that that kind of just adds to the, to the issue of, you know, we recognize that this is maybe not impossible, that unbelievably difficult for your organization to solidify a bond, but we still have to maintain the leverage. So, I think that, you know, the bond is probably something that is asking too much. And, but I think that they have to, we have to be very aware of what the leverage is, which is that if it's not done in the period of time that we say it needs to be done, that the conditional use permit could be revoked. Thank you.
Mike, could you speak to the alternate parking surfaces that they could use as opposed to concrete? Under our previous, yeah. It's, we, we have some alternatives now that we didn't have before, so what could they use?
There's permeable pavement. It still needs, you know, asphalt, concrete, or permeable pavement that's installed per manufacturer's directions.
So, they could use, with a compacted subbase, they could use pavers, for instance, or they could use those little tiles like they have at the hospital, the grass grows up through, or those various types of things?
Yeah.
Just need to be installed to the manufacturer's specifications?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Okay. Couple of things I wanted to talk about here. For me, it's the separation of policies. I recognize the good that's done, and I recognize what the city has going on, but step back and let's look at it in a common sense factor. It's a residential neighborhood. We know there will never be a business in there. It's not zoned for business. Business would not consider going in there. Our zoning ordinance states that this could be as a nursery school, preschool, or a rest home. I, I think we're right in that area with this. I think there's a good decision made that Valley Haven is a good fit in here for a conditional use permit. This will change our use. The zoning that happens here is going to continue throughout that neighborhood of being 7R1, single-family residential. Go look at the neighborhood. There are no sidewalks. This would be a corner property with a sidewalk. There would be no property on Maple and Second. There is no property across the street. So, what we're doing is imposing a business requirement on a CUP in a residential neighborhood on, basically, an elderly home.
This is, this is actually the only missing piece of sidewalk in the neighborhood.
You sure?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm gonna go back and relook on Second over there, then. I might have missed some of them.
From Second to Third?
But, all right.
It's the only one.
Okay, well, I could be wrong on that. That's fine. But, but, you know, in the whole zoning part of it here, we're talking business, business, and nothing here. You know, we're putting parking requirements on. I, I just kind of looked at this, and there's three lots there for all practical purposes, three city lots. If there were three homes there, there would be two cars on the street, which is plenty of room on that street. There is a tenant. You minus him with his off-street, there's still four sites that are available on this, on the, the street. The, the parking doesn't add up in my eyes for the square footage of the intended use and what is actually there on the property itself. One of the things about it is, is their bus shuttle, I'm seeing it, it meets a general plan stipulation element, so they're actually doing us a favor by, you know, running their bus there. I think one of the biggest things we can do, and this comes right out of our February 13th, our staff report, if the commission issues a CUP, the CUP may be reviewed in the future, and additional conditions could be imposed should there be complaints or negative impacts on the surrounding uses. This is a key thing. This is where I think that as a council, we could actually put a covenant on it. If there is a change of use, an increase in patients, if there is anything done other than what is stated in this CUP, you would enact the additional parking, the sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. But as you're going in there, starting off basically very green and fresh, that you do what you do now. You know the intent is, if you get one more patient, every year we'll review this CUP, that then it's gonna be the trigger to change. But at least this will get you in the door, as long as you recognize the covenants and that every year, that you're probably gonna have to come back to the planning commission and, you know, basically renew your CUP. That's kind of how I see it, is probably the best way that we could go ahead and work with this, you know? It just, it, it would be a win-win for everybody at that point, I feel. The city, eventually, we would have, two years from now, you may be better off financially. You could get a couple of feet of sidewalk in through. I don't think the, the parking, you'll do that on your own, I'm sure, eventually, just to make it better for yourselves, so...
Councilmember Hombdahl?
Yeah. Sandra, a question I had. Shut my phone off. Is, the staff would park on Maple, though. When you talked about you're gonna come in there on, on Third and unload and such, that's where the patients come in. Your staff, they parked on the curb and not had the other parking. They would be parking on Maple, would they not? They could go in the front door that way.
They could probably park either on Maple, or they could park further down on Third, because our lot extends quite a bit further than the driveway. It extends even past the garage, so we could actually fit all three cars down by, you know, further down on Third Street as well. So, I mean, either way, I think, you know, we're open.
Yeah, I was thinking more about where the staff is parking.
Right.
Not where you're gonna bring people in, so...
Yes, yes. So, they could, they could either park on Maple, or they could park further down on Third Street, obviously not right by the driveway.
Yeah, okay.
Just to clarify, Marilyn.
Councilmember Costa?
If we don't make a specific requirement date, they're gonna be able to park wherever on the street. I mean, that's, unless you make it a specific requirement, I mean, they'll probably park wherever is the most convenient for them at that time. And maybe there'll be other residents parking there that they'll have to park around. I mean, you know, who knows? So, Marilyn, what I would suggest is, it sounds like maybe we should take this into votes, because I, I think we have the overwhelming support for the parking, and then maybe take the sidewalk in a separate vote.
Well, how about if we just gave them some time to do all of it? I'm, I'm still not comfortable waiving requirements. I, I don't have any difficulty reducing it from five parking spaces to three based on all, the, the fire marshal's occupancy and so on and so on. But I really am uncomfortable with granting them something that I'm not willing to grant to folks in the future. I really like to be fair and equitable. I'm more than willing to give them some time, which is what I think they need. I'm very comfortable, number one, is I think they're honest people, that they're gonna do what they say they're gonna do, but if we needed a stick later, we have the CUP. So...
Marilyn, I had to have a question for you. You said three spaces. There's two, and you counted an existing driveway or just one in the existing driveway?
There's two in the existing driveway. I don't think it's wide enough for another one in front of the garage, is it?
No.
Okay.
So, then you would see that they, one would be placed in the back?
No, they would, they need two for their buses and three for their employees. But they don't need, the buses are out front, so they need three in the back rather than five in the back. With regard to the amount of time you would be comfortable with accomplishing these things, 18 months, 24 months, tell me, tell me what's gonna work for your life, if we don't make you buy a bond and waste money?
Right. I would say, you know, if we could get three years, because, you know, like the gentleman said earlier, with regard to a bond, we've had our insurance agent looking, they've spoken to two or three different companies, and we cannot get a bond.
Yeah.
You know, at any cost.
Pretty comfortable with that. Three years is a really long time. How about, how about dividing it up into, into segments? Would that work for you? Maybe you do part of it one year, part of it the next year, and part of it the year after?
We could, we could probably do that. That would probably help.
Okay, so if we did the, gave you 12 months on the three parking spaces in the alley, and we gave you 24 months on the frontage on Maple for the sidewalk, including the curb, the handicap grab at the corner, and the sidewalk down Third Street to your driveway, and then you had 36 months to get from your driveway to the neighbor's sidewalk. How would that work for you?
Well, ideally for us, we would, we would like to remove some of those requirements.
Okay. In the less ideal world, how would that work for you?
If that's as good as it gets.
I don't know. I can't speak for everybody else, but for me, that's about as good as it gets. Okay. I don't know who is next. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's not that I disagree with what you're saying, but Councilmember Costa was making a request, and we sort of dismissed her, and I'd just like to have her explain more what she was thinking about before we even consider anything else. I mean, you, you did have a comment, and I'd like to hear the rest of it.
Sorry if I dismissed you.
My suggestion is that we, we take this conditional use permit appeal in two motions. The first motion being in regards to the requirement for parking. The motion that I would make is that we waive that condition, and we vote on that component. The second would be to discuss what requirements we want for the sidewalk, what timeframe, bond or no bond, et cetera, and then take a vote on that condition of approval for the CUP or appeal.
So, you're asking to waive all the parking conditions then?
The parking condition, yes. So, instead of five spaces in the back, we utilize on-street parking, because there is an abundant amount in this instance.
Is there any, Mr. Mayor, is there any way that we can meld the two together? Your request and Councilmember Costa's?
Yeah, no, I think we probably gotta take those in two motions, if that's the direction of the council. So, if you want to make a motion, then we'll see if there's a second, and we'll go forward on that.
Ms. Breeze, how would I go forward with that motion specifically? About the parking requirement?
If the council wants to waive the requirement for parking, the onsite employee parking?
I make the motion that we waive the condition of onsite parking.
The requirement for onsite employee parking?
Requirement for onsite employee parking.
And a second?
I'm gonna second that. And within the question, the second is that, that we gotta be able to put a condition on, if anything major changes, these things would go back into effect. I think Dirk brought that up already, is that there's gotta be a way that we could initiate the existing ones. I don't think, we don't need to do the five parking places back now, and that's why I agree with it. But I, if there are any major changes, any changes in the size of the building, more people coming in or whatever, then these other issues should come forward.
So, if I would be able to put words on the maker's mouth, what, that we would waive the, the off-street employee parking and with the current occupancy?
And the current projected employment?
Of a maximum of 15 clients and three employees. If that's...
Regularly occurring. I mean, there's special things, I'm sure, but regularly occurring.
If that's acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Yes.
And to the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, got that far. Any further discussion on that? Okay, can we vote, please? Okay. And that passes three to two. Okay, now to question number two. Let's try for a little consensus. Is everybody here comfortable with using the CUP as our leverage, because we can revoke it if we need to, rather than a bond? Knowing what I know about the bond world, I don't think they could get a bond, and if they could, it would probably be 30% of the, of the end cost of the project. So, if everybody would just voice your yes or no on that concept?
I was gonna make a comment real quick.
Okay.
I, I would feel much better if we just did the review on this. I, I really do not want to encumber this. Like I say, what did you get an estimate at? 15,000? You, the city's asking for a $22,000 bond, whatever it is. It's a tremendous amount of money when you're in there doing a huge renovation upgrade that you're doing right now. I see no way in two years, you're probably still gonna be paying for what you're doing now, and your water meter's probably not even settled yet. I, I think that we should come back and do a review on, on it. You know, I'm just, it's what the, the whole CUP is for. You know, I mean, it allows us to come back there and do a review of this process. How are the conditions being met? Is, you know, are you gonna be able to maintain it? Are you gonna be there in two years even? You know, I mean, there's so many questions. It's just, to me, it seems like we... It's just, to me, it seems like we should go ahead and at least give two years and do a review of the conditional use permit at that point, or a year. You know, just don't let it become forgotten.
Well, as it is now, they have to put the sidewalk in. So if we want something other than them putting the sidewalk in right now, that's an action we have to take. So I guess the question is, let me lead everybody forward. Would, would the council be comfortable with accepting the CUP, a CUP condition in lieu of posting a bond that I'm pretty sure they can't get and surely shouldn't have to spend the money on?
Yes.
Yes?
I'm in favor of it. I also agree that in two years, if they're not make it, I would have a really tough time pulling that CUP. So I think it's a, sort of a futile exercise, but I'm willing to agree. And you had mentioned that they're honorable people, and I believe they are honorable people, so I'll take them at their word, so. But in two years, I know I'm not going to be able to pull the CUP on them.
Well, that's a quandary for you. I don't know what to tell you. I, if we shake hands on this deal with them, I would expect them to come through, or life would not be good in two years, because I don't like people going back on their word.
I just want to reflect on the words, though. In the future, on the CUP. This is not an in-stone thing. This is a conditional use permit. And like I say, be reviewed in the future, and additional conditions could be imposed, should there be complaints or negative impacts on the surrounding area. That's right in our.
Okay. So, let me try in a motion and see if this works for everybody. That the conditions of approval be amended to allow them to have twenty-four months to complete the sidewalks. And if they fail to do that, the conditional use permit would return to the council.
I think that there can be some opportunity for dialogue, right? I mean, if they come in twelve months from now, and they, there is some major milestone met, and some major milestone not met, I think that that's something that can be an ongoing thing, like Councilmember Starbuck is suggesting.
Uh, hold on, I need a second, or.
Hold on a second.
Okay. Now go ahead and talk. Anyone else? Yes, you're right, and someone can come in at any time and talk to us about it.
I just had a question with regard to the motion. When does that twenty-four month time period start? Does it start as the date of occupancy?
Starts at the, starts today. When we approve it today, the clock starts. Everything is from the date of approval.
Okay.
Marilyn, perhaps, I think, because we would be granting the conditional use permit this evening, but perhaps the twenty-four month period is not to have the project completed, but to have maybe a certain component of the project completed? Or is there anything else that you're willing to compromise on, rather than having the full project completed within the twenty-four months? Because I can see that fundraising itself, I mean, I, again, I'm really going to suggest that you look into that capital, human services capital grant through the city as a potential. But I could imagine that fundraising is going to take a while. And then, of course, contracting and constructing is going to take a certain period of time as well. So I think that the main difference here is, when we have a condition on a conditional use permit for a larger project, who already has the funding in place for these things, it's saying, okay, the money is already there, you have twenty-four months to complete the project. What we're telling this rather small organization is, you have to find the money and then construct it within that twenty-four month period.
They can always come back and ask for an extension, and we can always grant it.
That's what I wanted to be said.
They, they have, you know, you have the ability to come back and talk about a CUP at any time. We're only talking about the sidewalk, the driveway's out the window, or the parking's out the window. Okay? Anybody want to talk about this anymore?
Could you repeat the motion?
Probably not. Yeah. Go ahead, Stacy.
The CUP will be amended to allow twenty-four months to complete the sidewalks. Failure to come, to finish the sidewalks could result in the CUP being pulled.
Correct, and also that we're not, they're not going to be required to have a bond. Sorry, I didn't include that, that was our consensus. Yes, ma'am?
Is there any way that we could possibly get longer than twenty-four months?
Yes, if you fail, you can come back and ask for more time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Everybody good for a vote? Let's go. And that passes four to one. Okay, do we have any other unresolved issues in this, Lucille?
Just for the record, you should probably also make a motion that you're approving, or granting the appeal on those conditions you just set up. And everything else in the planning commission approval stands as it is, except for those two items.
Okay. I hereby move that we grant the appeal on those two items, and that everything else in the planning commission approval stays the same, and a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Councilmember Lingle?
Question for the city attorney. Since I voted against the parking, I guess I would vote against this as well, because I'm not in favor of removing all parking.
It's up to you what you want to do.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote. And that passes four to one. Okay, good, got that done. Now we'll have the seven-minute break. Okay, now we'll have a public hearing on item number seven, consideration of ordinance number one, five, seven, six, thirteen, amending the Lompoc Municipal Code Title fifteen by adding chapter fifteen dot seventy-two, grading at the behest of the state of California. Mike Luther.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Mike Luther, city engineer. The mayor just took the first part of my speech here, so.
Sorry about that.
I'll just go to the background. As a result of the city's Phase Two Small Municipal Separate Stormwater System MS Four permit, issued by the State Water Resources Control Board, the city has been required to make changes to municipal code. In October of two thousand and eight, council approved the city's stormwater management program. Ordinance fifteen sixty-eight, apprentice ten, the stormwater ordinance amended Title thirteen of the municipal code by adding Title thirteen point three-two, Stormwater Quality Management. The city's stormwater management program is now referred to as the Stormwater Guidance Document. The Stormwater Guidance Document requires a grading ordinance to be adopted. The city engineer, in coordination with the building official and the senior environmental coordinator, developed a draft grading ordinance in accordance with the stormwater grading document, the MS Four permit, and current industry standards. On June twenty-seventh, a public workshop was held here at City Hall to discuss and receive comments on the draft ordinance. Public comments received have been incorporated into the ordinance fifteen seventy-six thirteen where appropriate. With the introduction of an adoption of ordinance number fifteen seventy-six thirteen, the city will have met the requirement for adoption of a grading ordinance. I'm available to take any questions you have.
Just one comment from attendees of the meeting who gave input and then looked at the final document. They said you guys did a great job of incorporating their thoughts, and you made it simpler, shorter, and better. And that comes from someone who's sometimes a little hard to please, so I think you scored big. Any questions at this time? Seeing none?
There was a quick question. What are the big changes here? Because I wasn't around in two thousand and eight, nor did I read that document since then.
There really aren't any changes for the grading. This is basically, we use the building code for grading right now, Appendix J. This just outlines, this actually has an ordinance in our municipal code now that defines grading.
So I want to get this straight. We have something in the stormwater management plan from the Regional Water Control Board that's made it easier for our people in town to do grading?
I wouldn't say it made it easier.
Yeah, so what's the change in here that made it harder?
Didn't really change the grading. It's stormwater items that make it hard. It's not really, it's kind of, they're two separate issues. There's a grading, and then there's stormwater. They're related, but they're not the same.
They're the same but different.
No, they're not the same.
Counsel? We just filled in the box required by our, our stormwater permit.
Basically, this is, how it ties into the stormwater is now you're going to have sediment control plans and erosion control plans, and making sure that the dirt on the site doesn't leave the site.
That's where it gets harder, then?
Yes.
So we're going to sell more of those straw bundles locally, which is going to improve sales at the places that sell those. So it's, it's going to be good for the local economy. Yeah, that's it. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Counsel, I would also add that the, it's really expanded the grading submittal process, is maybe the way you could look at it. All these other stormwater-related submittals that, that didn't, or didn't exist ten years ago, or even six years ago, now have to be submitted when you submit a grading plan. So that's how it's made it more difficult. There's, you have to prove that you're meeting the stormwater requirements during that period of time. Grading's been the same as way it's always been, but it's, stormwater's really the hurdle.
So if you create your project in a six-foot-deep hole, so water can't leave it while you're doing your grading, you'll be safe? Perfect, good. All of our buildings will be underground. That's it, okay. And now we'll open the public hearing. Who would like to talk to us about this item? Evening, Will. You still have to say your name when you get here, though.
Mayor and Councilman Will Skyler, living in Lompoc. The albatross is back again. Helps you regulate and run your wastewater plant and your freshwater plant. And now they're going to tell you how to do grading. Somebody said a miner. I don't know, and I hate to see the ordinance, if this is just a little chapter of it and it's twenty-eight pages long. The book must be about list thick with everything, so. I did notice that they had a public hearing meeting on that, and I missed that, I apologize. So I, maybe what I'm going to talk on's already been discussed or not. But one of the first things, when I went through it, I saw, I remembered some of our farmers and ranchers went to Santa Barbara when they were doing a grading ordinance, and they kind of ended up on a plus-three or minus-three. And I see this is now two here. So I don't know if it's the old shell game, you know? We got the county to go with, with three, now we get Lompoc to go with one, or two, and now maybe we can go get Santa Maria to go with one. So maybe it's standardized, maybe go three foot like the county has, so. Some consistency, maybe. Best management practices is back again. You know, this means do it, we don't care what it costs. If it takes your project off the table, and you got to go build it in some other state or some other country, you know, so be it, we don't care. It's on page eight, a security minimum of a hundred and fifty percent of the cost of the project. I find that kind of interesting. Those are my comments. Thank you very much for the privilege of speaking before you. And I hope you all read it and understand what it's going to do. So when the line starts getting long here, where the hell did this come from? Guys come back and say, well, in that, this meeting and this date, we did thus and so. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Closed, okay. Closed public hearing, come back for discussion. To Will's three questions, engineering department. Two-foot versus three-foot, BMP, and a hundred and fifty percent.
Could you repeat the first question? I didn't really understand.
Two-foot versus three-foot in terms of the amount of grading? I don't know. The county has a, has a requirement if you move three feet. Ours is apparently if you move two. There you go. No problem.
Those are the terms when the grading permit's not required? So if you're, if you're digging something that's less than two feet in depth, you wouldn't have to get a grading permit?
No, I think his point is, in the county, it's less than three feet, so how did we end up at two feet?
I believe that's in the building code. Appendix J, I can verify that.
Okay, perhaps you can check that out while we go on to the next thing. And BMP, best practice?
BMPs is a requirement of the stormwater permitting.
And is there any qualifier on that? I mean, the best practice might be you have a vacuum truck standing by to suck up all the water, but is it practical?
It's practical, yeah, it's not, you know.
It's not absolute?
Yeah.
Will has, Will, for some reason, has, you know, suspicion of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I don't know how that could possibly be.
And the, the security question on page eight about the hundred and fifty percent, that is, that is for the erosion sediment control maintenance. You know, if we, the city is the holder of the MS Four permit, so violations, they're going to typically go after the city first. So if the developer doesn't maintain his approved plans, somebody has to, or we could be liable. So that's just to guarantee that there's funding available to maintain.
And that's a bond?
Yeah, and that's, that's not for the cost of the project, that is for the erosion sediment control plan measures.
All right, any other questions from the council? Well, I have to tell you that I looked through a little of this. It made my head hurt, and I understand grading. But I talked to two people I trust emphatically on the subject, and they both said that the problems were resolved, and this is as good as it's going to get. So based on good advice from people I trust, I guess I'm good with it.
Just a real quick question to Mr. Luther there. This erosion and sediment control plan, now we've got all of our grading permits, we've got our grading plant submitted, we've gone into the city, we have a post-construction hydromodification, you know, we've done everything that we can, and we still go back here to the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Is that something that we have to do and forward to the state? Or is this something that the contractor? I mean, how involved are we with these idiots up there?
That is one of the responsibilities given to us through the MS Four permit.
There's no escaping this, is there?
No.
Yeah, you can stop all construction, and you don't have any liability. You know, I think it really, some of this is a lot less hideous than we would think. So for instance, Mike, maybe you could describe, just so everybody, we, the recent project for the excavation of the pipe across the old Kmart Center, they, they had to have a permit to do this kind of work. Could you describe what they had to do?
Are you talking about the county stormwater drain project?
Yeah, when they did that one. That contractor had to have this type of plan and erosion control or.
I don't believe he had to have an erosion sediment control plan. He had to have a, a plan that incorporated best management practices to ensure that there was no silted water or tracking of soil offsite.
So what did he do to do those things?
I wasn't actually running that project, I didn't review those plans. But typically, like, say the cooler plant on L Street, you know, they would, they would put in measures to keep trucks from tracking dirt onto the street. You would put gravel bags in front of storm drain inlets to catch, to try to silt up in front before it gets into the storm drain. Sweep the streets.
What waddles around the property?
Pick up trash on site.
Put the little straw waddles here and there?
Yeah.
Okay. And those are the same things that they would be required to do under this practice?
Yes, those type of items, yes.
So what they're going to be required to do isn't substantially different? Now they just have to put in a formalized plan?
Well, the big difference is that they, they're supposed to hire somebody to monitor, and, and we have to document, and those type of things, inspections and.
So the new and improved cost is the monitor?
Yes, and the cost of the city is, we have to go inspect and document.
Okay, so we probably need to look at what our permit costs are with regard to this, so we have recovery. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, I accept the motion. Seeing none, I'd accept the motion. Councilmember Lingle.
I move we accept council, staff recommendations.
And a second.
Second.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes five to zero. Thank you. Do we have any written communications? No. Oral communications, your last two minutes out in the audience to talk to us about something. Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications. Council requests comments and meeting reports from the left.
I don't think I have anything to report.
I don't either, thanks.
I actually wrote it down, so I don't have to remember. I attended the launch or the grand opening of the Healthy School Lunch Program. Yep, she was there, and she should really remember it. They have a great program. There were a lot of people in attendance, and a good time was had by all. And then I was, unfortunately, didn't get to stay very long, but the group cycling through for cancer awareness for firefighters pedaled into our town the other day and had lunch or had dinner over at Station One, had a nice chat with some of those folks. They're riding from San Francisco to Los Angeles to heighten awareness of the specific cancers that firefighters get. The most exciting thing was the grand opening for soccer at Huck Stadium. I'm happy to report that the goalie was nice to me, and even though I did a crappy kick, it went in, which is better than last year when a six-year-old beat me. This was actually a skilled teenager who was really nice to the mayor. I attended the ULA launch party and chatted with a bunch of their people at their invitation. There was a lot of excitement, and I attended the launch the next day when there was even more excitement, and some advertising. Because as we were sitting on South Base, or on North Base, looking towards South Base, they're standing up on the pad with SpaceX's rocket that they were doing some testing on at that particular moment. So Elon got his advertisement up. I also had two meetings in the meantime with Kevin Walters, the new president of Hancock College with regard to the police and fire facility and how to make some hay with that. And I had a luncheon the other day with the new superintendent of the Lompoc Unified School District, and we both agreed that we should be working together more on things, because as we were, and Kevin was there with me, we were talking about various things that each one had going, and I think we all came away with some good information. So we don't have too many things in common, but we have enough things in common that we can, we can benefit each other. And I look forward to working with both of them in the future.
I'm not going to make any reports, but I'd like to make a council request to get on the agenda the review of our AB 1600 impact fees, just to get a report on it, just to put us on date. I'd like to be able to discuss our street waiver that we currently have in place, just knowing the timeframe and the length of period, I think we should start on it now.
I will second that with a comment. We were sort of beat up in the paper today because we ignored your request last time, but you really did not have a request.
I was not anything to do with that.
Yeah, I know. But now that you did make a request, I will second it.
Yeah, I'd go with it.
Okay. And this is a brief report, correct?
I think it would be good to re-educate ourselves as a council and then to go ahead and look at what some of our impact fees currently are. You know, it's been 10 years. Our capital improvement plan is equally out there. It's good through 2017, so this is probably a good time to start on it. I know that Mr. Wookiee will be thrilled to get this done.
I'm happy to, I know this is something we need to do, but we do have staff issues that we're all aware of, and I'm not very comfortable with bringing a really, really major project forward.
No, no, I'm not asking for it to be a major, major project. And this is, I hate to use this word, but when it is initiated, it's done by a consultant. It will be done outside of staff here, but staff will have the majority of input to put into it. I understand this.
Okay, everybody's good with this, right? Okay. And it has three. Okay, Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 22nd, I attended a NCPA meeting up in Roseville. The city did pay for my hotel room and mileage. On August 26th, here in Council Chambers, I attended a RDA Oversight Commission meeting where information was just presented, there was no action taken. On the 29th, I was out in Los Alamos. I attended the Santa Barbara County Wine Ordinance Meeting, which, it was just for input. Again, there was no action taken. Today, this afternoon, I attended the Santa Barbara Foundation Meeting, which was to discuss the I Love Lompoc campaign that was presented to us tonight. And then I do have a request, not a council request, no staff involved, I have a request of my fellow council members to consider attending a dinner being put on October 5th. It's called Dinner in the Dark. You may have read about it in the newspaper recently. Dinner in the Dark. It's extremely reasonable, $25 for a dinner. It's going to be held at, I believe it's La Parisma. It's going to be a very unique experience. The Lions Club, as many of you may know, deal with sight issues and helping people that are either blind or having sight issues. This will be the first of its kind held here in Lompoc. I believe the first of its kind even in Santa Barbara County. But it's exactly what it says. It's the Dinner in the Dark. It'll be an experience of seeing, somewhat seeing, not nearly seeing what a, not necessarily even a blind person, but just a person with sight difficulties deals with. It won't be completely in the dark, but it'll be a good experience for us all. So I'd love to have my fellow council members join me at a table, October 5th, for $25, and I can contact, you can contact local Lions, or I'll put your name down. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hombel.
The only thing I have to say, we did have a gentleman in here from a company down south that is interested in building a hotel, and we should be here in the next few weeks when that possibility to come in. He was very excited with the tour we did. We gave a tour of whole Lompoc Valley, Mission Hills, Vanerick Village, Hancock site, and the staff that was there did an excellent job of presentation, and they were very excited. And also, I haven't got the final date, but supposedly SpaceX is supposed to fire tomorrow. I didn't get my phone call on it, but it's slick six, same area that you just seen one the other day, and this is 163 feet tall. And so anyway, that's what's coming down the road, but we do have people. There's one other thing that I happen to sneak into the executive committee of the Economic Council, and the comment made by Hancock College is now that the Texas Oil Company Group that has joined bringing somebody in, bringing people in, are signing a contract, and it looks like they'll want to train all their members, everything in the western United States here. So that came in that what Hancock is finding out, what we're finding out, nobody expected the oil industry to be a member of the training that they need to train, and they're coming in with both barrels and coming, there's three oil companies signed contracts out there, and now, of course, there's this one out of Texas, which is National Oil Association. So expected the numbers go. And the latest is that they're going to have the ribbon cutting April 1st. Even though the school opened in January, they figured that by doing it that way, instead of getting rained on on an open house and opening of it, they'll have it in April, but school will start. And the contract is supposed to be finished and turned over to the school sometime at the end of September 1st of October. That's where everything sets right now. So it's really moving right along, and they did exactly what they said. They said they could finish in 2013, and that's exactly what's happening. So that's, I forgot to bring up.
Okay, anyone else? The Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM, except we'll probably have a closed session before that, on September 17th, 2013. Thank you for attending.